Can I have your attention, please? We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to Lowell Planning Board for Thursday, September 21st, 2023. First matter on the agenda tonight would be the approval of the minutes from September 7th, 2023. Anybody have any comments or question on the minute? If not, we're going to have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve minutes on September 7th.
Motion is made. I'll second the matter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair vote aye. So, and nobody vote no, so minutes are approved. First matter on the agenda is an extension request for 43 Fletcher Street. On September 23rd, 2001, Christopher Natale was granted a site plan review and a special permit approval for the planning board under Article 12 Table of Uses Section 12.1E for the construction of 21-bedroom residential units with two commercial units on the first floor ground level, as well as a special permit to reduce residential and non-residential parking by 50% under Section 6.1.66 of the City of Lowell zoning ordinance. The applicant is seeking an extension to that permit. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, Attorney George Theodoro, 491 Dutton Street, representing the applicant, Christopher Natale. Right. Yeah, I'm sure we're one. Make sure we're right. Dirty, 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 dirty way. In this. I'm ready. Yeah, I hear that. I was. Adam. It's a good one.
Can I have your attention, please? We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to Lowell Planning Board for Thursday, September 21st, 2023. First matter on the agenda tonight would be the approval of the minutes from September 7th, 2023. Anybody have any comments or question on the minute? If not, we're going to have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve minutes on September 7th.
Motion is made. I'll second the matter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair vote aye. So, and nobody vote no, so minutes are approved. First matter on the agenda is an extension request for 43 Fletcher Street. On September 23rd, 2001, Christopher Natale was granted a site plan review and a special permit approval for the planning board under Article 12 Table of Uses Section 12.1E for the construction of 21-bedroom residential units with two commercial units on the first floor ground level, as well as a special permit to reduce residential and non-residential parking by 50% under Section 6.1.66 of the City of Lowell zoning ordinance. The applicant is seeking an extension to that permit. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, Attorney George Theodoro, 491 Dutton Street, representing the applicant, Christopher Natale. I placed a site plan and also the renderings on everyone's desk to try to refresh everyone's recollection with respect to the project that was approved two years ago in October of 2021, in which we obtained site plan approval, as well as two special permits. This property is in the UMU and we received a special permit for use, as well as a special permit for, to reduce the parking by 50%. And those were granted. During the period of time, my client, Chris Natale, he was working on a project at 279 Dutton Street, the Umidos Candle Factory, which also came through this board, as well as the Board of Appeals. And during that period, it became a very cumbersome project. Supplies were limited for the type of glass and steel that he needed for the project. It was very slow. He had numerous delays, so his time was spent trying to make that project work, which is just about finished today. Given that he didn't have the time to devote to this project, which was important to him because this is a gateway project into the City of Lowell, considering the reconfiguration of the lower overpass. And one other aspect of it was, he also wanted, was in negotiations with the City of Lowell to obtain a small parcel that has a National Grid Transformer on it, but that was premature at the time because the city wanted everything else completed. So, we are before you today to obtain a continuance of the special permit, and we would like to have another two years. We're just about finished with this project, and it will take time to delve into this. There is additional work that has to be done in some of the testing over there, some of the soil testing to support, to support the building at that site, which I, which I believe, I forgot to mention that the building was a former bar, which was Fury's Bar, which is now going to be across the street from Lowell 5. So, it's an exciting section of the city, which is being redeveloped, and we'd ask for your vote to continue it, special permits.
Thank you, counsel. Anybody here this evening want to speak in regards to this matter for the extension? Okay, at this point in time, any of the board members have any questions? I'm in favor of the continuance. I remember the project. I remember voting for it, so I have no problem at all for going along with the request for the extension for two-year period.
A question, so, is the city still considering selling the parcel to your applicant?
We're going to start negotiations with the Urban Renewal Department, but as long as that parcel doesn't serve any purpose for the city and they have no use, we don't see why we would be, we would not be successful in a, in a type of yard sale.
Got it. And then I know, and from, from the site visit that I, I made, the parcel ends at that driveway, right?
That's correct.
So, there's still a driveway in front?
That's right.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Should I have any questions or comment? No. I'll make a motion that we approve the extension for two-year period.
A second motion?
Motion made. Second, all in favor say aye.
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 I abstain.
Okay. Any opposition? None? So, matters approved, three in favor, none against, and one abstention. Good luck, counselor.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving along, we have a definitive subdivision, 32 Mariner Street. Stonehill Properties LLC has applied to the Lowell Planning Board seeking definitive subdivision approval at the above address. The subject property is located at the traditional single-family zoning district. The applicant is seeking to subdivide the existing lot and construct a new single-family home. The newly created lot will not meet the minimum frontage requirement per Section 5.1 of the Lowell zoning ordinance. The project requires definitive subdivision approval from the Lowell Planning Board under Lowell Subdivision of Land Regulations. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney John Cox, 375 Gorm Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. I represent Stonehill Properties, Inc., Jim Paterno, manager, who is here, I think outside in the hallway right now, in relation to this request. Just for a little history, back in February, we appeared before the Lowell Zoning Board requesting two variances, one for frontage and one for, I think, minimum lot area. Both were approved unanimously and recorded on April 4th, 2023. Tonight, we are before you for subdivision approval because even with the variants, the, what we have now is a 50-foot of frontage on Mariner Street, as opposed to the 70 that's required. I should point your attention hopefully to the memo dated August 14th, 2023, from the staff at DPD, and talks about this application. And I think the, there are two important points on the second page. Point number six, which says the existing frontages on Mariner Street range from 30 feet to 120 feet. Frontages on Fruit Street, which run parallel to Mariner Street, are mostly 50 feet. The proposed frontages are not out of line with existing development patents in the neighborhood, and seven, DPD staff does not have concerns about the proposal. The, clearly, Mariner Street is an accepted street in the City of Lowell. Been there for a long time. We're not proposing any new streets. We're not proposing any changes to Mariner Street. The, it's an accepted, approved street in the City of Lowell. It has all utilities. The, all utilities are there for the, for the proposed one, single-family home, water, sewer, electrical. They're all sufficient to, to serve, service that new single-family home. Sidewalk is in good shape there on Mariner Street. So, there really are no, no real issues pertaining to subdivision. It's not, you know, not a subdivision as we would think of it. Again, we're not proposing any new roads or streets or anything like that. So, we think it goes good with the neighborhood. Again, the variances were granted unanimously, and we are requesting approval from this board for the subdivision. Here to answer, Matt and I are here to answer any questions, and we hope you look favorably upon our request. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, could you guys go over to the lot for us?
Thank you. So, the existing property is here to the north of Mariner Street. It consists of 10,000 square feet. There's an existing single-family, which is located here, and an existing driveway that's located here. The lot's going to be divided into two separate lots, each of which are going to be 5,000 square feet in lot area, and each are going to be 50 lineal feet of frontage. If you'll notice, the lot behind us on Front Street has that same configuration, so it's mirroring what's directly behind the site. There's going to be a proposed single-family home on the newly created lot, an associated driveway, a front entrance porch, a walkway, and also drainage as well at the rear of the property. As part of the original variances that were issued, there was an agreement to remove this asphalt here and also include a couple shade trees as well as part of that approval. This is an elevation of the proposed house from, from the street, which is located here. This is the rear with an overhang exit, and this is the side elevations shown. I can answer any questions that one has.
Thank you. Anything else on behalf of the applicant?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, counselor. Anybody here this evening like to speak in favor of this project? Just come to the microphone, please, sir, and give your name and address.
My name is Davith Nem, and I live on 15 Mariner Street. And I'm here to oppose the project because it's 5,000 square feet. And don't you need 7,000 square feet to build a house? You guys built, City of Lowell built a lot next to mine. They built three huge houses, single-family houses. We don't need another one on that street. I love Lowell, you know, I love Lowell, but it seems like you guys are building houses in every nook and cranny. We don't need another house on that street. You know, I have two little kids, you know, they like riding their bikes on the street. We don't need more cars flying down that street. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Anyone else like to speak on this project? In favor, in favor? Or anybody wants to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? At this time, I'll turn it over to any board members. They have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may.
Yeah, Mr. Fisher.
In understanding the comment from the budding neighbor, and I'm looking at the, what the planning board is charged with, with the subdivision approval. So, the applicant before the Zoning Board of Appeals for those specific variances for the, for the lot size, and I actually spoke to Fran this afternoon, because I am still trying to get clarification on our responsibility on the subdivision control, subdivision approval when variances are required, the applicant goes to the Zoning Board of Appeals and receives the variances. And so, what I actually was referred to the Massachusetts A&amp;I Handbook, and was looking at that, and really, the only thing that, the criteria for subdivision that we're looking at, again, they went to the Zoning Board of Appeals for exactly the items you're talking about, the lot size, the frontage. So, when we're looking at this, we're looking at, first of all, is there frontage on a public way? And is there adequate frontage to address the vehicular needs of, of the, of the lot? Because I'm still trying to get my arms around this. I feel a little frustrated because we have a special permit requirement within the zoning ordinance where an applicant can come to the planning board for reduced frontage if it's a lesser amount than what they requested for variance at the Zoning Board of Appeals. So, the way I see what we're looking at right here, pretty straightforward from a subdivision, they've applied for a subdivision approval with us. So, do they have frontage on a public way? They do. Do they have public utilities? They do. And does it meet the needs of the vehicular access to the lot? It does. So, from that perspective, and they did lay out, I'm assuming that would have been the argument they would have presented to the Zoning Board of Appeals with the range of the, at least the frontages of the lots within the area. Can't speak to the size. In this case law, in this A&amp;I book, that the planning board can't use lot size as a criteria for subdivision approval. Believe me, I looked at this a lot this afternoon because this is really new coming to us, so I'm trying to get a better understanding so I don't have to call Fran every time we get one of these on our, on our agenda. So, I understand, I understand your comments, and I, you know, and certainly, that would have been something to be articulated at the Zoning Board of Appeals. From what I see, we're charged with, at least as I view it this evening, is that criteria. And based on that, I don't have any issue. I saw the conditions of the Zoning Board of Appeals with the shade trees, and you have the usable open space, I think it was like 920 square feet or 960 square feet in the rear of the property. So, again, that's not the criteria we use for the subdivision. It isn't, unfortunately. So, so from that perspective, I did see, though, in the, in our subdivision control, and this is a bit antiquated, but I guess I would just make it subject to approval by the Board of Health. We're supposed to actually get something from the Board of Health that they would, so I would make a condition upon that, but I would have no, I have no problem with the application, based on the criteria in which we're making a decision, as I see it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Caleb, any question, comments?
Yeah, I actually looked through part of the sections to try to understand and ask Dylan about it, and get the same answer as well. And it's kind of weird, kind of the role that we're, this board is kind of in right now, but that's the, that's the process. So, I think I assessed the same thing, you know, whether they have street frontage on public way and parking, and those seems to be satisfied. The architecture plan looks okay. They'll be on the driveway, right? I mean, that's the plan. And parking is dependent on, like, the parking regulations. Now, a question to, to the applicant, is there a fence that is proposed on the lot line? In the new lot line?
What's that?
Is there a fence that are proposed? I don't see a fence that is proposed. Is it going to be open between the two lots?
Oh, yeah, it's going to be open between the two lots.
Okay. And then a second question, I know, like, there is a huge slab of asphalt, you know, on, on the original house. I don't think there is an open space requirement on this side, but just want to get an idea how much it will be removed. Is it just that flange going out to the other lot?
Yeah, it's actually, we're going to straighten out that side that protrudes out, and then we were going to take some asphalt off the rear as well.
Okay, so, so there will be a bit more open space?
Correct.
Sir, when he's speaking, don't interrupt, please. If you want to speak again, we'll let you speak, okay? Okay, we'd just like to have one person speak at a time, okay? So, just let him finish, and then I'll let you come back and speak, okay? That's all right, no problem, no problem.
Thank you.
All right? When the board members are done speaking, you have any comments, don't be one happy to entertain them. Go ahead.
Thank you.
This is first public, public speech, so I'm not really good at this, and I apologize.
So, I think the answer to your question is, I think, they show a driveway here. Matt, correct me if I might have been wrong, that's where you're going to put the two cars in the driveway off the street, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, they have a driveway coming in, looks like it's big enough, it's for the driveway to put two cars off the street on the lot, and they're required in that zone to have two parking space for the one, single-family home.
And I remember looking from some other plan, probably from you, Matt, there are trees. Are those still in the plan?
Yeah, we're, and part of the original approval was to put in two shade trees under the direction of the Department of Planning and Development.
I see. And so, those are still in play?
Yes, they are.
Okay. I think, what is it? Oh, so, so I, my reading of the Section 5.1.1 is that, like, if it is, it's a special permit, definitely, you know, you're asking for more relief on the frontage, but since that you got the variances, that wouldn't be an issue. So, I understand that, and I also recognize that you just basically extend the lot line from the neighboring lots, so I recognize that it is something that is not unique to your proposal, so I think, I think this is a reasonable plan. Thank you.
Should I have any questions, comments?
No, thank you.
Just one quick question. So, where you have the concrete now on Lot 1, and we have it jets out into Lot 2, when you pull that back, that's, that's going to be green space?
That's correct.
It's going to be green, okay.
Yep.
So, and I did notice that the stone wall was in the front. I think that, that's going to be removed, and I think, like, the stone wall's coming down?
Correct. That's correct. Yep.
Two? And I noticed that, when I was up there looking at it the other day, where the stone wall stops, it's like a, almost like a little opening in the stone wall, like a drive that goes, that could go back to the shed. It was like, when the stone wall stopped, it looked like there's opening that almost could be like, where you could drive in.
Right here.
Down there.
Yeah.
So.
So, that's going to all be removed?
But that's all coming down?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, yeah, because you're going to put your driveway in the right side?
That's correct. That'll all come out, right.
All right. Then, when I was looking at the house up there, I noticed that it looked like that the house to the left here, the cellar, I believe, looked like they had a fire there or something, because I could see it was all boarded up.
Yes, there was a fire there.
There was a fire there, was there? How long ago was that?
About a month ago.
Oh, because I could see that it was boarded up, and the siding was all melted, it was on.
She would have been here, you know, because she would never oppose to this project. She would say no right away, but, you know, she, unfortunately, she's, you know, she's in New Hampshire. I don't know if she knows about this right now.
Yeah. So, there's nobody living in there now in that house?
No one's living there. You can't, yeah.
Yeah, I couldn't tell how bad the inside was. I could tell just the right side, how it was boarded up.
Yeah.
And there was no cars there, I couldn't tell.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Matt, did you decide where the trees are going to go, or that's up to, something you'll decide?
It's essentially going to be, it's going to be one where that opening was, where that drive is.
Yep.
So, there'll be one here.
Okay.
And then there's going to be another one presumably here. But again, we consult with the Department of Planning and Development.
Sure.
For the location of those.
Okay. Okay, I have no further questions. Any of the board members have any further follow-up? Anything else you want to like to say, sir?
It seems like you guys already made up your, your mind and your decision on what you guys are going to do. You guys are going to build this regardless, but I know, you know, Mariner Street, South Lowell is not, you know, it's, you know, I just feel like, I don't even know what to say. You know, it's not, it's not Belvedere. So, it's, you know, you guys are building it because it's South Lowell, you know, South Lowell, it's, you know, it's not the greatest area, but, you know, you know, I've been living there for seven years. Buddy, Buddy Flanagan, who lives across the street from me, he would have been here, but he's, you know, he's ill, you know, he's old, he's ill, he can't make it, and, you know, I have his letter in my hand to, you know, oppose this project.
Did he submit the letter to the staff, or?
I'm sorry, what was that?
We can, we can read the letter, too.
Yeah, sure. I didn't open it yet.
Do you want to give it to Fran?
Yeah.
You can take a look at Fran, see if it's appropriate, before we... So, we've approved definitive subdivisions, and Wentworth Ave, up in Belvedere, and a couple of other places up in Belvedere, so it's not just we pick and choose what part of the neighborhoods that we approve them. We've done them in the Highlands.
Yeah, I know.
Done them in Belvedere.
It just seems like it's.
We've done them in Tuckerville. We've done them in Centerville. So, I mean, basically, it's, do they have the frontage on the road as these gentlemen have indicated? So, we have certain criteria that we look at, and as the vice chair has indicated, all the, most of the relief they got was from the variances from the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Which is a different board.
Right.
It's not us.
So, they, I don't know if you were aware when they had that meeting, when was that again, Attorney Cox? You said it was back in March or something?
No, I wasn't. This is my first time.
Okay.
That was back in January.
To begin with. So, we just have to see if it, as the vice chair has indicated, you know, that, is it, does it, is it on the public way? Does it have enough roadway in the front? You know, the, so our pot is a lot more limited than what the Zoning Board of Appeals has already granted, so.
I can read the letter, if you'd like.
Sure, okay, thank you, Fran.
This letter is regarding the property at 32 Mariner Street, Lowell, Mass, to approve or disapprove a lot that needs relief of fronting and side yard requirements. At a previous meeting, a brief presentation was rendered by the builder. We were not impressed with it, and it was voted down. If relief is granted, this home will improve, it says improve the neighborhood, which seems counter to the rest of the letter. Please accept this letter as an approval by us.
So, they're in support?
So, they're in support.
Okay. Does it say who that friend or?
Yeah, from Nancy and Walter Buddy Flynn. So, it says that, at a previous presentation, the builder, we were not impressed with it, and it was voted down. If relief is granted, this home will improve the neighborhood. Please accept this letter as an approval by us. That's what it says.
Well, it sounds like there was a previous, previous project that was denied.
Maybe they liked this one more.
And then they liked this one better. I don't know.
Okay. Thank you. So, what's the request of the board for the approval of the definitive subdivision?
Well, Mr. Chairman, based on the criteria of subdivision approval, I would make a motion to approve the request for the subdivision with the condition that approval is received also from the. condition that approval is received also from the Board of Health.
One question.
Sure.
So I know we've done definitive before. Do they have to build that house?
That's been approved by the zoning board of appeals. That doesn't fall into subdivision. If there would have been the special permit for us for the reduced...
Got it.
This is where it gets confusing, because for the special permit, they actually have to have design review, and then we can have some say on how it's gonna look.
I see.
So that's what we're kind of, you know, even some of the issues you're bringing up, if this was a special permit before us, then we would have some purview over that. The variances, all day long, that's a tougher threshold if you had been at that meeting or neighbors had been at that meeting, that's where you can really hammer that out. The subdivision approval was a little frustrating at this end. It's almost like site plan review, as far as I'm concerned, but...
Sure, I think, you know, our reading of the, of all of this is, there should have been an A&amp;R, and, you know, but here we are, because I think, not Fran, but somebody else.
Yeah. Because once you get the definitive subdivision, you get the A&amp;R because you have the frontage on the lot.
Right. A&amp;R is approval not required.
Correct.
So supposedly, if they get the variances, there's nothing in the way, but the procedure requires them to come to us.
Yep.
And it was the city's engineering department that pointed out reference material where there had to be another step beyond...
Yeah, I didn't want to say that, but...
Yeah.
So, yeah. It's, so I would make a motion to approve, and again, based on our own subdivision control regulations, that we're required to have approval by the Board of Health. So I just make that as a condition, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we have motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second, Chenade, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion carries. Good luck. You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Members of the board, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, for coming. I appreciate your input.
Fran, very thankful to Fran and her staff at DPD, they're so helpful.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving along, on the agenda, we have the approval for the 2024 meeting schedule. Anybody have any questions or comments on that? Okay, make a motion to approve.
So moved.
All right. Motion made, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any notices or further comments? I just have one. I noticed the other night at the Lowell City Council that they passed a motion to name part of the Riverwalk for Bob Malavich. So I thought that was very, very nice. I was watching the council at home, and I saw his wife speak, a neighbor speak, and the motion was put out by Counselor Mercier and Counselor Nguyen. So I thought that was very nice, because that same day, Jerry has here this very nice article in the local paper about Bob. Talked about how his planning efforts were, and talked about the Riverwalk and everything else. And, you know, obviously, we take a lot of pride in what we do here, and Bob was very great, sitting next to us and being here for the last 10 years, even to the end, when his health was ailing, he made every effort he could to zoom in and participate. And he always had a lot of history to give us. And when you read the article in the paper, he talked about how much history going back, and how we started in the city in, I think it was 1969 or something, late 60s. So I'm glad to see that the council recognized Bob like that, and hopefully they, so I guess their procedure is, they vote for it, it has to go to a committee, then it goes back to them. That's what Counselor Mercier was saying the other night, that we don't have the final say, we make the motion, it goes to somewhere else in the city, then they send it back and gets approved that way. So, so basically, before, they used to just name them, but I guess the procedure's changed a little bit. So if, Fran, if this goes through, could you just keep us in the loop on this? If you hear anything, so...
Yeah, I'll keep an eye out.
If they're dedicating something on the Riverwalk, maybe some of the board members would like to attend?
Absolutely.
I know I would, you know, so...